I call this meeting to order. This is a regular school board meeting in the Northfield Public Schools. It is Monday, October 28th, 7:00 p.m. Dr. Richardson, there were a couple items in our table file.
Couple of items in the table file. First of all, we've got a report information on the 7th grade environmental education programming. And so you, there's a PowerPoint presentation in there. And again, both Jeff and Erin will be sharing with you some information about the work that's been done this fall on that program. We also then have some personnel items, including appointments and increases and changes in assignment for this year.
And then I have one additional item I'd like to add. We have no items for information currently, and I'd like to add an item for information that Dr. Richardson is going to discuss with us, a possible work session to discuss future district facility needs. So if there's no objection, we will add these items to the agenda as we move forward. All right. Move on to public comment. This is an opportunity for members of the community to address the board. Is there anyone who wishes to address the board? Okay. We can move on to approval of the minutes. Board members, you have in your packets the minutes from the last regular school board meeting held on October 14th. Is there a motion to approve the minutes? Moved by Carrie? Seconded by Ann. The discussion? All those in favor of approving the minutes say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Minutes are approved. Announcements and recognition.
Okay, and I do have several this evening. First of all, on October 3rd, Greenvale Park, an assembly featuring Victor, the Minnesota Vikings mascot. Assembly promoted healthy eating, 60 minutes of exercise daily, and had many fun minutes, moments which go hand in hand with their fuel up to play 60 grand. Victor gave each of the students a wristband, reminded them to exercise daily, eat healthy, and challenged each classroom to make plans to work at this. Greenvale Park has also received from the Midwest Area Council, a free milk jug from McDonald's to reward each student for their work to improve wellness at school. And I, don't ask me what the milk jug is about, because I don't have that finite piece of information, but it sounds good. Bridgewater also held their annual bus driver appreciation breakfast last Friday. And again, thanks to the drivers at Benjamin Bus who support our students and transport them safely every day in such a very positive manner. And again, had a good turnout, and Nancy and her staff do a really nice job of providing an appreciation to the drivers. Also, there will be a Veterans Day Assembly will be held at Bridgewater on Monday, the 11th of November. That'll be at 9:00 a.m. in the gym. And if you've been to that in the last few years, that's become a really big event. All veterans are welcome to attend the assembly and reception following the cafeteria. And again, an opportunity to thank them for their service. So again, that's Monday, November the 11th, at 9:00 a.m. in the Bridgewater Gymnasium. Also, our middle school honors choir has been selected to perform at the Association for Middle Level Education National Conference on November the 7th, at 9:15 a.m. And we don't have to fly them to Anaheim, or Chicago, or anywhere else. They're actually being raided. They will be right here in Minneapolis. Also, Principal Jeff Pescia will be conference co-presenter with Angie Johnson from the Minnesota Department of Education at 8:00 a.m. on the same day. This conference session is to have systemic middle level redesign building a Minnesota model. And Jeff will be giving you some more information about the fact that we also are taking this opportunity to have all of our teaching staff, along with himself, will be at the conference on Friday, November the 8th. And so we will not be having middle school on that day. It's kind of a once in a lifetime opportunity to allow the entire staff at a very, very reasonable cost to attend a national conference on middle school education. So I think it's a great opportunity for them. Also, the middle school youth centers, Young Northfield Chef's Cooking Club, led by members of Firebellies, the Carlton College Culinary Club, were recently featured in the nationwide Bon Appetit Food Service Magazine, Bravo, and on the Illina Health Clinic website. The partnership aims to inspire and empower middle school youth through the universal language of food. I can remember in middle school, it was the universal language, providing them with life skills inside and outside the kitchen. Seafood and eat it. Each week, the course focuses on a different aspect of cooking with interactive hands-on activities designed to give students more comprehensive understanding of cooking and nutrition. And also Beth Berry, who recently retired as our high school coordinator of the Torch Program, has received HCI's Making a Difference Award for October. Probably many of you may have seen that in the paper. The award celebrates groups and individuals in the community who have a positive influence on Northfield youth. And Beth, as you all know, has been a driving force behind the Torch Program since it was formed back in 2004 or '05. I'd also like to announce that if you happen to check in on Sunday in the Star Tribune, we got a nice piece of her write-up as part of the English learners face uphill battle but getting help. And while a significant part of the article was some of the concerns involved, our part was under finding success. While helping students master English can be difficult, many schools are finding success. And a nice quote by our own Anne Maple, who, again, we were talking about graduation rates for Latino students in Northfield, increasing from 36% to 92% over the last 10 years. So very, very positive piece about the Torch Program. And I believe that's everything that I have.
All right.
Okay?
Very good. Board members, other announcements or recognition? All right. We will move on to our first item for discussion report, which is Sibley Elementary.
Hello.
Scott?
How y'all doing? I won't be offended, or we won't be offended, if you have to get up and leave to attend your child's band concert, right, Mr. Hellman? And Mrs. Crichard? Yes. No, good evening. Thank you for allowing us to present our school improvement plan here tonight. Joining me in the presentation are the Sibley RTI coaches, Becky Ganey and Tanya Will, and second grade componeiros teacher, Katie Sherman. Both Katie and Tanya are working on their administrative degrees, and part of Katie's internship hours were spent writing the school improvement plan, which I thoroughly enjoy it, to be honest with you. So Katie's going to present a good portion of this plan tonight, typically the portion that I present. And Becky and Tanya are going to do what they've always done. They focus on, really, the staff development aspect, and they've always been heavy contributors to our staff development plan. So our presentation's going to be a little bit different. We went to a different spin last year with this, and tonight Katie and I are going to walk you through the three goals and the progress we've made. And then we're going to shift gears, and Becky and Tanya are going to show you what we're doing to meet those goals at Sibley each and every day. So we have, we have three goals at Sibley. We have two student achievement goals. One's literacy focused, the other's math focused, and then we have a climate goal. And we follow the statement of empowering the learner, building foundations, and, you know, work toward that each and every day. Our, as I mentioned, we have these three goals, reading, math, and climate. And I'm going to talk about the accelerated growth goals that we put into place. And if you read the school improvement plan, you know that we want 65% of our students to, to meet 125% of their growth target every year. And I'm going to talk briefly about that before I turn the presentation over. But that's something that we came up with a few years ago, and as we reviewed MAP scores, we looked at goals, and we thought, boy, students who are behind grade level expectations right now need more than just a year's worth of growth in order to get where they need to be by the end. And what has made this even more challenging for us as we move forward is we have tried to weed the garden a bit with our assessment, just because we were offering the MAP test in the fall. We were offering the MAP test to those who wanted to take it in the winter, and we are in the MAP test to those that wanted to take it in the spring. And then we had our MCAs coming into play. And the MCAs, you know, one year they were taken three times. Last year, we took a couple practice tests for math that led to the real test, you know, for the MCA in the spring. And we looked at this, and we decided we're going to start using the spring to spring measure of growth. And over time, we found that the scores in the spring are higher than the scores in the fall after the long summer of forgetting, we typically call it. And that's making this even more challenging. But our goal here is that we want to support, we want our students to grow. If you look in the 40 percentile rank there, that's where our first grader is starting in this model. And if we want that student to eventually get to that 60th or 70th percentile rank, they're going to need to make 125% growth each year to get there. So we have to accelerate that growth. And we do that with strong core instruction, and that's something that Becky and Tanya were doing long before they became RTI coaches. They were both the literacy coach and the math coach, and they worked on that strong core instruction. As we move forward, several years ago, you helped us by allowing us to bring in specialists who were able to provide us with block scheduling. And that provided us with the opportunity for flexible grouping. And that flexible grouping has, has taken a stronghold on what we're doing. And a big part of what we're doing through the PLC process involves flexible grouping and organizing that, and working on that, and mixing kids up to meet their individual needs. We then introduced response to intervention, and we take a look at our students who maybe aren't being successful in the classroom with their academics, or maybe aren't being successful in the classroom from the behavior aspect. But we use Friday morning meetings with Becky and Tanya, and our school psychologist, Melissa Reed, and our school social worker, Noreen Cooney, to take a closer look at those students that, that are maybe slipping a little bit. And we, we do that along with the classroom teacher. And Tanya and Becky are terrific at providing different kinds of interventions that we can, we can try on students and see if we, if we teach them in a different way, can they learn, you know, outside of that strong core curriculum? So we're using all of that to try to get to that 125% growth target. Before we go any further, does that make sense? I explained it last year in a pretty similar way, but I'm going to turn it over to Katie Sherman, and she'll take it from here.
All right. So that was kind of our broad overview of what we're doing, and I'm going to bring you through the nitty gritty of the data collection and the analyzing that we did. So in thinking about our accelerated growth goals that we had, this visual shows that 65% of our second grade students did indeed make 125% growth in both reading and math, as did 65% of our fourth grade math students and 65% of our fifth grade math students. But did we really achieve 65% of our students showing 125% growth? We did not, but we're gaining on it. And we've had conversations about the fact that it is a lofty goal. We do think it's attainable, and we also feel very committed to continue working towards that. So for 2013, 2014, we are, we are going to keep the same goals for student achievement in both reading and in math, and we are going to work toward that 65% of all students meeting or exceeding 125% of their typical growth. And Tanya and Becky have some plans in place for how we hope to achieve that. At Sibley, we do our best to stay above the state averages for MCA scores, and this visual represents kind of where we stand in regard to the state average, which is represented by the blue color, the district average represented by the yellow, and then red shows Sibley And that's for reading, math, and our fifth grade student's state science MCA. We also set a goal last year that 20 out of 20 of our classrooms in grades 1 through 5 will meet 100% or more of the classroom target growth scores on both the reading and math portions of the spring MAP test. That score averages out all of the target growth scores for our classroom, and then we look at an overall class percentage that is at 100% or more. Last year, 12 of our 20 classrooms met their target growth score average in reading, and 10 out of 20 classrooms met their target growth score average in math. So clearly, there's room for growth here. Because of that, we plan to keep our goal of 20 out of 20 classrooms in grades 1 through 5 meeting 100% or more of the classroom target growth score this spring on the MAP test. In thinking about our MCA data, when we went to analyze both our reading and our math sub-strand data, we found that Sibley students were above the district average and above the state average on all of the substrands except for one, which was the number and operation strand in math for fifth grade. We were above the state average, but we had fallen behind in the district average. Because of that, we set a really specific goal last year. We said that by the spring of 2013, our Sibley fifth graders would increase their average score in the numbers and the operation strand from below the district average to above both the state and the district average as measured by the math MCA3. And this graph will show how we did, the results of that. So the blue represents the state average at 5.12, the yellow 5.24, and Sibley students had an average of 5.35. So we did meet that goal. In addition to our math and our reading goals, as Scott mentioned, we did set two climate goals last year. On the family survey, we worked so that 90% of our families would agree or strongly agree that students show respect for other students. And on the staff survey, we were working so that 90% of our staff would agree or strongly agree that morale was high on the part of teachers, students, and even support staff. The reality was that 93.8% of our families agreed or strongly agreed that students show respect for one another. And the second question, we did not, so we met that goal. We moved to the new principal survey last spring, and so this question was not included on that. We've set three new climate goals for this year. We are going to work so that 95% of our families agree or strongly agree on the goals of students showing respect for other students, teachers showing respect for students, and parents feeling welcome at Sibley. So we've set some numerous high achievement goals for ourselves, and Tanya and Becky will tell you how we plan to achieve them.
All right. At this point in the presentation, we want to talk about where we're headed and what our plans are about getting there. And we want to share plans for our year-long staff development and ways that we are reaching learners at all levels, as long, as well as sharing some new initiatives and resources, and some learning celebrations. At the end of September, all of the school psychologists, elementary school psychologists and RTI coaches were able to attend a workshop in St. Paul called the Midwest Instructional Leadership Council. And we were inspired by the keynote speaker, Jim Knight, who is a researcher from the University of Kansas in the Center for Learning. And he wrote a book called High Impact Instruction, which set us on a path for our year-long staff development. He believes that staff development must be structured so that teachers can do the important work of doing their best work so that children can do their best. And he believes that there must be four factors in professional learning to make this possible. Number one, professional learning must embody respect for teachers as professionals. Number two, it should have a clear focus. Number three, teachers should have supportive instructional coaches. And number four, coaches, principals, and teachers should have a deep knowledge of strategies that impact students' learning and engagement. And Jim Knight's presentation led us to create a learning map, which is one of our instructional strategies that we're sharing with teachers. And Tanya and I made a learning map of what we wanted for our staff development for the whole year. And we are planning to, we've already created an efolder and a paper folder that has all of our staff development laid out for the entire year, touching on these five areas that we learned about from Jim Knight. And it is our primary goal that teachers feel supported in their work through our staff developments. Well, as Becky mentioned, the bulk of, the bulk of our building staff development time will focus on core teaching practices that make a difference, those that have a high impact on learning. And during our core instruction, we'll use a combination of explicit instruction, practice and feedback, informative and summative assessments. In addition, we're carefully selecting instructional strategies such as thinking prompts or effective questioning techniques that increase student engagement, which in turn affects achievement. One of the biggest things that was a takeaway from that workshop was how we can key on, key in on student engagement, and that's one of our underlying pieces. You can see, while this is core teaching, we have whole group instruction, we have some practice time, and definitely have some engagement in the bottom corner. Differentiation remains a very powerful tool to meet student needs at varied levels. Teachers carefully orchestrate their lessons to include small group, individualized, and partner sessions that address skills, topics, and strategies for learning. And we see differentiation taking place within classrooms and also among grade levels as flexible groups are taught at instructional levels. It's really fun to go into the classrooms and see how this plays out in each of the different scenarios. So these are just a few snapshots of things that we would find. And the block scheduling format has been instrumental in supporting differentiation through flexible groups. Teachers make database decisions in forming these groups and focus on the essential learnings outlined in their PLCs. Support staff are often utilized during these times in order to bring both review and enrichment activities to our students. And the transformational technology initiative has positively impacted our instructional efforts and student learning. iPads are used in a variety of ways, often to address skills with small groups or individuals in ways that can be tailored to a particular level of understanding. They've also transformed, transformed the world of math-backed fluency as we've moved to a web-based fluency program called Extra Math that is more efficient and environmentally sound than our previous plan. So our first ready, set, go day took place on August 27th during the week of our workshop at all elementary buildings. This was a new format for us, and RTI coaches in the district were really excited about it. It was a lot of work, and it was a big change for people, but our, our results from our surveys really show some, some very positive feedback. Teachers spent the day getting to know students and their families in this new format. Students were scheduled for an individual time slot, and they were able to come into their classrooms, meet their teachers, and put supplies away, and complete some initial benchmark assessments. All of our staff members were involved in this kickoff to the year. And our feedback from both teachers and parents was very positive. We continue to screen all students using our universal screeners and progress monitor our students who fall below benchmarks. We are really conscious of over-testing kids, and we're trying to make smart decisions regarding testing. This is a picture of Scott who did some screening for us. We had lots of people involved, and we were really excited that he was also willing to screen some kids. We continue to refine our work with interventions by making them more easily accessible to teachers and tutors. Here you see a Common Math intervention being done by classroom teacher April Ulsterman, and a fluency intervention called Great Leaps being done by me. We're excited about some new resources to help support our work with students who need more intensive instruction than the core curriculum offers. VAS, our Benchmark Assessment System, is our new text leveling system that helps us determine student reading levels and their reading habits. Math Elevations is a new resource for use in flexible grouping, and our reading support person, Kathy Bennett, is thrilled to have level literacy intervention as a resource for her work with struggling readers. Our school improvement goals serve as the overarching goals for the work that takes place in the PLCs. Teams first develop SMART goals after examining student data related to our building goals, and then essential learnings are prioritized, and common formative and summative assessments are used to track that progress. Teachers agree to a common pace and reflect on student results. So this sets up a powerful cycle of continuous improvement. And here you can see a third grade team working together, and a district specialist team of FIAID teachers. And at times, our specialists or other staff members might be requested to join the PLC for their expertise in a particular area related to the SMART goal. And really, these professional learning communities are the backbone of our school, backbone of what we do. In addition to the regular data studies that drive our PLCs, official data conferences occur three times per year. This is an opportunity for PLC teams to join with the student support team to reflect on and discuss the current reality while making plans for future growth. Three other ways in which we support teaching and learning are through pure observation, cognitive coaching, and providing resources and data. We are really excited to explore the many ways that we can learn from pure observation. The collective wisdom of our staff can help narrow in on, on areas of professional growth. Cognitive coaching, we have five coaches trained at Sibley, and it continues to be a tool that we use in reflection, planning, and problem-solving conversations with our staff. And we also work to provide teachers with the resources and data that they need in order to move forward. We're also reaching out to our newly hired staff through a trial mentorship program that meets monthly to connect and discuss pertinent topics. Now, the next few slides will show how we support diverse needs at Sibley. The special education team continues to meet regularly to address the needs of students on IEPs. The student support team consists of RTI coaches, social workers, psychologists, and the principal. Both groups address individualized student needs. The special ed group meets student needs as outlined in an IEP, while the SST group uses a problem-solving model to address emerging needs. The school psychologist and social worker are part of both groups as they ensure communication and act as a bridge between the two. Three special ed programs housed at Sibley include the NB, DCD, and LI programs. We embrace the diverse needs that arise within our unique populations and learn from these students every day. This is truly differentiation at its finest. We look to the experts of these programs as we team together to create optimal learning We're fortunate also to have support in both reading and math. Kathy Bennett, at the bottom, serves as our reading support staff who meets with small groups of students in order to grow their reading skills. Continuing this year is Minnesota Reading Corps member Peter McGory, who works with students in kindergarten through third grade to increase reading fluency. And then a new program at Sibley this year is Minnesota Math Corps. Michael Garlets, in the upper left, works with fourth and fifth graders to increase foundational math skills. Our English language learners participate in focused programming that increase language acquisition and build vocabulary, which is important for comprehension and concept development. Amanda Schroeder works with a small group here, while another group of students work on expression as they read into the whisper phones. The PLUS program occurs after school and serves over 40 students daily. This program has grown and now utilizes the expertise of three teachers that work to build foundational skills related to our building goals. Here, Elizabeth Valentine leads a small group, while students practice fluency skills with partners on the right. And we are excited about the partnership with Accelerate Northfield that brings countless volunteers into our building each week. Carlton and St. Olaf students, along with community volunteers, work with our students according to individual needs. Guiding their work are materials that our teachers have put together that specifically support learning at a particular grade level. New last year, we had some fourth and fifth grade volunteers who were trained to work with readers in kindergarten and first grade. The older students volunteered to work with a young reader for two 20-minute sessions per week. There were 32 pairs of readers who worked together over the course of the year. This was a very exciting initiative.
This was a very exciting initiative for all involved. The enthusiasm of these young volunteers was amazing. Through the work of Kathy Bennett, Peter McGory, our Minnesota Reading Core member, and myself, we started a summer success program. Given that we will not be having year-round school anytime soon, we know that we have a great need to keep children reading over the summer to prevent the summer slide. And here's how it worked. We sent out notes to our parents of struggling readers, and parents signed off to and agreed to work with their children three times a week over the summer using an intervention binder and leveled books that we provided. The binders were sent home with 38 students. Each binder contained an intervention along with some research validated reading strategies. A bag of books at each child's independent reading level was included in the binder, and as children finished reading the books, Peter would deliver a new set of leveled books. He would make arrangements with the parent to exchange the books. We applied for a healthy community grant for $300, and that provided our books for the children for the summer. Students who brought back their binders in the fall and their books in the fall were rewarded and given a little certificate for their hard work over the summer. Our Spanish speakers were supported through the Summer Plus program. We also created math and reading binders of interventions for Summer Plus teachers to use with all students in the district. We are collecting some rough data, and we found our goal was to keep kids at their same reading level or grow them. We found that roughly 61% grew or stayed the same in their text level, and 73% grew or stayed the same in their DIBELS measurement. We are hoping to grow this to the other buildings as well. It was, it was kind of our initial attempt, and we were happy with the results we saw, and parents were very happy. One of the biggest challenges for parents is finding leveled books for their kids. It's very difficult for them to go to the public library, and there's so many different leveling systems or books that aren't leveled, and so that's why we wanted to put the books right in their hands. Now for some learning celebrations. It wouldn't be a Sibley presentation without a little slide for Beyond Words. Beyond Words is an art and literacy celebration we host every year in April. We are in our 10th year of Beyond Words. It promises to be bigger and better than ever. It's a wonderful community celebration. Each student has a masterpiece displayed in our art gallery, and there are art and literacy activities that fill the hallways and classrooms. Families come together for this spring celebration, and we invite all of you to join us. It's April 3rd, 2014 this year.
Now, the coner part to Beyond Words, I suppose, is Celebrate Math Week, which is much newer, a much newer event to Sibley. In fact, last year was the very first Celebrate Math Week ever. So during this week, students participated in a variety of math activities during school time. Guest speakers and special projects showed math being connected to many parts of our world. For example, mathematical art filled the walls, paper engineering projects grew to new heights, and science and math combined to amaze us all. And every day had a new math spin. Estimation Day and Math on the Move may have been two of the favorites. And Celebrate Math Week will continue this year, and will take place at the end of January.
Looking ahead in literacy, we touched on all of these, I believe. We'll continue to strive for providing students with best practices in reading with an emphasis on creating lifelong readers.
And as we look ahead in math, we will continue to work to strengthen the core instruction with new pieces, with the new pieces of Extra Math and DIBELS Math in the picture. We're paying close attention to fact fluency and computational fluency, and how these skills impact achievement.
And we are excited about our staff development as we look ahead to our year that's already planned out. We are trying to do our best to support teachers so they can do their best work with children. Now, Scott.
And now, Scott. The closer.
They said they were all going to run and hide when it's time for questions. Do you have any questions?
Board members? John?
I do have a question about the, the foregoing the, the fall tests. How does not having that data point affect the way that you, you deal with the students for the, for the rest of the year, prepare for the spring? And how does not taking a test improve the experience for the students?
That's a great question. We use the scores from the spring moving forward, and the reason we went to a fall test several years ago was because we, we weren't able to cluster the students into their homeroom class. That's really the only reason we went to the fall test initially. With Viewpoint now, we have the ability to take the test in the spring, and then when the students are organized into their class for the next school year, all of those students, that whole roster of students shows up with their score. Prior to Viewpoint, we weren't able to do that. We, we basically were in a situation where we either had to put new spreadsheets together and, and make that all work with the, with the, the test score and all of the other information in there, breaking down the test in, in different areas, or test them again, and we decided to test them again at that point. But that was, that was before we were taking the MCA test two or three times for math as we have been the last couple of years. And what we're seeing out of our students is they, they are at times being overtested, and, and we are trying to weed the garden. We're also doing some, some, you know, quick assessments like DIBELS assessments and those kinds of things, but they, they don't take the, you know, 45 to 60 minutes that the MAP test takes.
So really, the, the point of the fall testing was for grouping, which you're saying you can now do with the?
With Viewpoint.
With the, the, so a different test, not, not doing the MCA test? Or?
Not doing the MAP test.
Viewpoint is software, but is it, it's a, is it a different test, or are you talking about using the scores from the spring?
Yeah, Viewpoint is actually a database that puts everything together. And, and once Roger Jenny does his part of it, and Chris Nessit does her part of it, we're in good shape. We get that roster of students coming to us with everything we need to know and more, including all of their report card information and everything else.
Because I, I am told that the students at Sibley, and it doesn't matter who tells me this, that, believe that MCA is an acronym for Minnesota Child Abuse, but.
And that part, we have no control. MCA is required at the state level and also the federal level. The other piece that's part of this, John, and I think as the building principals talked about the potential of dropping off the, the fall MAP assessment, is that one of the things we do know is that, that when kids come back in the fall and take the MAP, there's an artificial drop in their performance, which then makes it easier to see growth between the beginning of the year and the end of the year. By doing MAP spring to spring, you're actually seeing kids who, who've had the entire year's experience from the previous year and what their score is, looking at the entire year experience in the new year, and really measuring the kind of growth that occurs. So in, in reality, we think it may give us a better score. Now, we still do the, the fall MAP for individuals who come into our system who have not, do not have a MAP score on?
That's correct.
File, so that we always have that data available for every student, including those kids that maybe have not had a previous MAP test.
And our first and second graders, if they're not taking the MAP test or the MCA test, so we do get baseline data on them in the fall.
And to just clarify what you said, it's not a better score, it's a, it's a more accurate?
We think it's a potential, it's a more comparable score, looking at how did you do after you had an entire year's worth of instruction versus how did you do at the end of the next entire year's worth of instruction? Where before, again, as we talk about the summer slide or the summer drop or whatever, the reality is potentially kids were going to perform at a lower level in the fall simply because they had been away from school for three months and away from instruction for three months.
And we, we were taking the test early enough where there wasn't, there wasn't enough time for the recruitment of those skills that they had forgotten. Typically, they come back to them rather quickly, but we were taking the test in September, you know? So there was basically three and a half months that had gone by since they had taken that last test. So we try to push the, the MAP test back late in the year if we can. It's like the second or third week in May. And then, you know, we, we do offer the option. So if teachers, you know, if they feel like they didn't have a valid score, or they want it, they want, you know, another assessment on that student, or a particular student or a group of students, or students that were in progress monitoring or whatever, the option is still there. And then the winter MAP test is an optional test for our teachers as well. So we'll see that utilized at times, but it's a plan that we, we really talked about at Cabinet and decided to make a move for the district.
Thank you.
Other questions? Carrie?
Well, I just have kind of a few different topics. First, I really applaud you going to the spring to spring as a way of measuring student growth. I think that's, that's really important, not to have that kind of false dip in the fall and then, and then look like we have growth that maybe isn't occurring. But just to kind of follow up what I'm, what I think, I don't know if John's asking about this or not, but, but just to make sure that we're still collecting data on how much kids drop over the summer so that we know where they are, where they come back to us. Are we doing that in something?
Well, we're not taking the MAP test.
Yeah.
But we are, we do have other assessments that we're doing. You know, we're doing, we're doing the DIBELS assessment. You know, that's still in play. So that's something that is quicker and easier, you know, for us to, to do. It's about a three-minute assessment for our, our younger students. So we can certainly get a read on where students are with their fluency based off of that assessment.
And how about for math? I mean, math, I think, is harder to recoup over the summer, isn't that right?
This year is the first year that we've, that the elementary schools are using DIBELS Math as a screener at the beginning of the year, and there are individual screeners in K and 1 that look at like number identification and quantity discrimination and a few others. And then in second through fifth grade, there's a computational fluency piece that's in place. DIBELS Math doesn't quite have the benchmark set for concepts and application, but that's coming. So right now, we've committed to taking a look at how the computational fluency piece will, will impact our instruction and, and check out how kids are learning. And the concepts and application part, we're kind of working, as, as DIBELS gets that in place, so will we.
Tanya, come back. I'm, I'm, I'm thinking about the Summer Success Program, and I guess some of this is for Becky too, but two questions. One, was there a way of checking in with parents? You know, they're supposed to be doing this three times a week. Was there a way of checking in with parents to see if they were doing it? And then secondly, for you, is, is there a plan to try to do something like that for math over the summer, which I think is a bigger chance?
I'll answer the second part of that question, and maybe Becky can answer the first part. As far as the math part goes, what I'm finding is reading always does things first, and then suddenly math follows. So we're kind of hoping for that. In fact, Becky told me that there were some parents that were asking for, do you have a math thing like this? So we're excitedly thinking about how we could put something like that in place and work with parents in the same way.
We don't really have a way to, we, this first round to check and see how parents, if parents were using it, but we did have them graphing results, and that's what came back in the fall. And so one of the things we know about kids visually seeing their progress is really huge for them. So we had some simple graphs in there to show how, how much time you worked on it, and then, you know, your growth in, in the, in the measurements of the interventions. So it, you know, we, we informally got those back and saw, but we have to be a little careful about that. And, you know, it was, it was basically an invitation, and parents signed up for it and, and wanted to, you know, help their kids over the summer. And, you know, many of them do, they just don't know how, and so this was our attempt at helping them with that.
And, and did you have, no, more, but the outreach to Spanish-speaking families, did you have Spanish-speaking parents who were doing this? And how do we support them in helping their kids learn English?
Well, we had everything translated into Spanish, and so our parent, our Spanish-speaking parents did sign off on it. Lot of those binders went into our Summer Plus program and stayed in the classroom. So we knew that they would get some assistance with an English speaker in that capacity.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions?
I had one follow-up. On the Summer Plus and the Summer Success Program, which I was, Katie had told me about that in the spring, so I was really thrilled to hear about it. Do you have a sense of the, the students that were in the Summer Plus in addition to the Summer Success? Did you see some sort of synergy? Was it that the students that participated more in Summer Plus, that it worked better? Or any sense of that, that programming is, is critical to the Summer Success Program? Or did you set it up more that even if they weren't at Summer Plus, it wasn't going to be as critical? I know you talked about the Spanish part, but I was just curious as to what the synergy was between the two.
It wasn't part, excuse me, I would say it wasn't part of what we expected all students to do. It was kind of an additional thing that, the beauty of Summer Plus is we have lots of help, and so those children, we were always able to have somebody that could read with them. I think it depended at each grade level how many children were participating, and who came to you, because it was just at Sibley. So if you had a heavy Greenbelt Parker Bridgewater classroom, you may not have had many, as many binders. Or in my case, students that went home with a summer binder did not attend Summer Plus, even as Spanish speakers. So there was a little bit of a disconnect, but as Becky mentioned, it was our first attempt, and we, I was evaluating and reflecting what went well and what didn't, and I could see it becoming more of a formalized program, is how I would say it.
Great, great. Thanks, Kate.
I think one of the things that we're going to see across the board is, I think as Erin and Mary and the, all of the RTI coaches are looking at the work that's occurred over the last year, there was some synergy around thinking about how do we provide interventions for students during the summer? I think we saw a little different, a little different strategy at Bridgewater, but again, addressing kind of how do we intervene in the summer? And instead of a binder, basically, I think we had RTI coaches there going directly to individuals at Summer Plus and basically teaching them how to do the intervention and then letting them do the intervention. So I think this will be something as we move forward, and because I think it, it was really clear, I think, as a, as a cabinet team, that we were hearing from the board, what are ways we can tie all of the summer programming more tightly together and, and tie the RTI intervention strategies to the Summer Plus program? I think you're going to see that become more a part of that. I think this year about it, there was a lot of exploration, and that's, I think that's a great part of what we were able to do because we had people in each building in that coaching role that we're, that we're thinking really hard about, how do we address what's happening to kids when they leave us in the summer and don't come back till fall? And trying to think about how that could go. And actually, some of that came out of discussions we had last year when we talked about the calendar, talked about the summer slide. I think people were energized to try to think about what could we do? And so I think there were a number of kind of toes in the water in terms of trying some different pieces. I think that will be more sophisticated and probably more connected as we go into this summer. Another part of the, of the issue, though, that I think we have to work with, and Erin I know is trying to, to think about that piece, is trying to get enough time in the summer to where we can actually make that significant difference. Because as Roger would tell us, there's not enough days of Summer Plus to even be able to do a measurement at the beginning and the end to see what the impact was. And so I think what, part of what we're trying to think about is, are there ways to stretch and squeeze every dollar that we have to see if we can do some additional pieces to help that? And again, remembering however that out of the, about 900 And again, remembering, however, that out of the 900 kids that should qualify, we have about 250 to 300 kids that actually participate. So, and that's a part that, as long as the programs are voluntary, that's, there may be some limitation to how much impact we can have when we can't necessarily reach out to every student who has needs during the summertime.
Any other questions?
Oh, I'm sorry. This, I guess, well, it's coming from someone who's been an iPad skeptic, but I'm just interested in the extra math that you're using with the iPad. I'm thinking about the fact that we've got now all of these iPads, which kids in grade six through 12 have during the school year, but they're not being used currently during the summer. Would that be a way to extend the math fluency program and the reading over the summer? If you could check those out to students over the summer to, instead of binders, just use the iPads?
That's a great question for Mr. Hellman.
Well, to be clear, I think that the extra math we're talking about is in the elementary schools, where we have a significantly less number of devices. We have 450 iPad minis that are checked out to elementary schools. And so is that a possibility? It's certainly something that we can talk about. I think it is a different piece than the secondary. I think there's a clear difference there. However, what we do know is the fact that whenever we can extend the school year, and that's been a whole part of this all along, is to be able to try to extend that school year in the way that we can. But I've also said before that the device itself does not improve anything. It's the specialized programming that people would put together for students, just like the binders. The binders are successful, not because they're magic, it's because these people who knew the children, knew their skills, and knew their dispositions, put together something that was personalized for them. And that's what the whole iPad initiative was about, is personalized learning. The iPad is one method, and a very good method of doing, because it has so many potential functionalities. The binders that were put together are doing the same thing in a different way, but we certainly could explore that. We just haven't gotten that far into this yet, Rob, to be able to know that. There are, what I will tell you is that some school districts who are in one-to-one ahead of us, the one-to-one part, and there are districts that have one-to-one at the elementary level, Farmington being one of them, starting in fourth grade, there is some great debate after their first years as to whether students will even check the devices back in over the summer for exactly the reason that you're saying. To my knowledge, no one has had the courage to pull the trigger on that yet, because of the fact that there's this thing in schools, we collect everything when kids, you know, at the end of the year, and we hand it back out. That will end. I don't know if it's this year or the following year, but that will begin to end, because as students have their own learning device, and we start to empower them to learn beyond the school walls, and there are people who can put together those specialized programming based on the student needs, I think we will start to see that. I'm not sure if it's this year, next year, maybe it's 10 years from now, but it will be here at some point. Does that answer it, Mr. Stans?
Well done.
Any other questions? Well, thank you, Scott, and Tanya, and Becky, and Katie, that was wonderful. Appreciate you taking so much time to walk us through your goals for next year. All right. We are ready to move on to our next item, which is the seventh-grade environmental education presentation, which Erin, and board members, you have in your packets and additional PowerPoints. Actually, that was in the table file.
Well, thank you for having us here tonight to do a little recap of the seventh-grade environmental education field experiences that have taken place this year. You will see there's some great pictures throughout this slideshow of both Eagle Bluff and the trips that were taken during the school year as well. Okay, to start, and most of you have seen most of the recap from the Eagle Bluff trip that happened in August. And also included in your board packet was the result of the survey that we gave to all families that attended that trip. And you will see, there were 78 families that attended, and we had survey responses from 27 families. So each question that we asked is also in your board packet, and these are just some of the highlights. We did have 78 students that attended the Eagle Bluff experience. We had room for 80 students. We did have one girl drop out a week before, and then we had one girl that was sick the day before. We did end up with four boys that were on the waiting list, but due to the room arrangements, we couldn't, we only had space to add girls. And so we did end up with four students that remained on the waiting list. All four of those had registered after the deadline, and so we were able to accommodate everybody that was in on time, and actually even some that were actually in after the original due date as well. 20 of those 78 participants did receive a scholarship, so 26% of the students that participated in the Eagle Bluff trip received a scholarship, which was really fantastic. There were some great efforts made to reach out to children that would like to participate, and then also to help remind them of the trip throughout the summer, because that was also a concern raised initially, that without school being in session, it may be hard for some families to remember about the trip. But we did have some great success in getting students to participate. A huge thank you to Amy Allen, who was the coordinator of the trip this year. She has coordinated it for many years, and it was really an excellent effort on her part. Also, thanks to Jeff Pesta, Candace Hard, Katrina Meehan, and Craig Johnson for also chaperoning the trip. We did then have six parent chaperones who also participated along with the staff chaperone. And so you can, as you read through this, I've touched base on most of the pros from the trip. One thing, as we continue, as it says on the bottom, that other times of the summer are available. I have already talked with Eagle Bluff for this coming summer. They still have quite a few dates that are available, and a significant number of dates in August, which, as you can see from the survey in your packet, was certainly of the summer months, was what was preferred by families that were going. Just a few of the cons from the trip. Amy has indicated that that was her last year of coordinating the Eagle Bluff trip, so we will be looking for a new Eagle Bluff coordinator. She has extensive binders put together, so there will be, and has been offered to be helpful in the transition. So we certainly will have her expertise to carry with us as we go forward. There was an increase in cost, which we did talk about as we scheduled this trip, from when it was run by the middle school. We did also learn one thing, that there is a pretty significant medical waiver that is due for Eagle Bluff. This is something we tried to collect right at the end of the school year, and did some collecting over the summer. One thing as we move forward is that we'd like to start registration earlier so that we can do all of the collecting of forms while kids are still in school. So we made some great efforts and had everybody's medical forms. And we also did realize that sometimes when they turn them in early, there is some slight adjustments that happen on children's medical forms, but at least to have, be able to collect those in advance to school being released is much simpler. One other thing, which we have talked about, too, is moving the date up slightly. This year was a little bit of the perfect storm of, as far as events happening with an iPad distribution, and School Picture Day, and a few other things, all falling when we were looking at going on the Eagle Bluff trip. Some of those will not take place in future years. But one thing we also heard back from the chaperones was that potentially moving it up just one week, so even for staff chaperones, that it doesn't coincide right with Teacher Workshop Week, would be appreciated by those that went. And that, those are dates that are open at this point with Eagle Bluff as well.
All right, we'll shift to the day trips that we had. And so there were two day trips, and the emphasis was on environmental education and the team-building activities that typically would transpire during the Eagle Bluff trip. And so that was the direction to split those out. So you see that the two-day trips were held on October 3rd and October 8th. So it was a Thursday-Tuesday combo with the students each flipping from one to the other on those days. So some of the advantages that we saw at Base Camp, which is at Fort Snelling, has been developed recently by the Boy Scouts, and it's operated on part of Fort Snelling, right by Highway 55. You probably can see the towers and everything there, next to, not far from the Whipple Building. Base Camp can accommodate 150 to 180 students per session, and that was, one of the primary reasons why we looked at doing anything for this year was, there were, at the time we left, there were 362 students enrolled in the seventh grade, so much more than the 300 average. And Base Camp can accommodate even more. We had 321 students attend Base Camp. The trip was cost-neutral, so we charged about $15 per student, and that's about what it ended up costing in the long run with everything, transportation, and so forth. The Base Camp, the way they operated is partially indoors and partially outdoors. The facility itself is, used to be a horse barn next to the polo grounds on Fort Snelling, and is an amazing historic facility that's been completely refurbished. I can't remember how many millions of dollars they put into it, but it is just a phenomenal facility. It's jaw-dropping to go in there and see that. They can actually run everything, including ropes courses, everything, for that number of students indoors. And so the first day, it was actually raining, and they did a lot of the activities that they had planned outdoors, indoors. But the second day, which is the day that I attended Base Camp, the weather was perfect, and so they did a lot of the activities outdoors. They could even do, run the programming in the winter, and we only accessed a small portion of what they have available. We kind of picked from a menu what the items we wanted to try to replicate that, the things that kids always liked about Eagle Bluff so much. Students were actively engaged throughout the day with no unproductive downtime, spending the entire day there minus the bus ride up and back, nonstop. The kids were busy. We'll close a little video that shows you just what it's like there at Base Camp. But that doesn't happen often, even on well-planned field trips, where it isn't a while, they get squirrely, or wonder what's going on, what else is going on. They were thoroughly engaged. It was actually kind of difficult to come up with anything negative, but I had a slide for cons, so I came up with a couple of things here, just to show that we're balanced here. I personally talked to two or three students that chose not to do the climbing activity. So out of 321, I'm aware of, I think, three that, on my day, that did not choose to do it. There were various reasons, fear of heights and other things. And that happens at Eagle Bluff on the, you know, the confidence course and things like that, where we encourage them to get the training, and maybe even step on the wall or whatever, if they don't want to go up, they don't go up. And amazing, it was amazing that, didn't seem to mind that they didn't go, they felt really connected to the other kids, because they went through the training, they got suited up, and they gave it a try. Pushing somebody up, as you can see, up a wall like that, would not be a good idea to, or to pull them up on a rope or anything like that. So because Fort Snelling is a fair distance away, it wouldn't necessarily be easy if somebody was having a behavior issue, somebody wanted to run them back to school, because they weren't meeting the expectations they're going with for the whole day. We didn't even bring an extra vehicle. We, you know, even I rode on the bus up there, and we didn't have any problems, but if there were a case where there was, we did return, I think, with five minutes to spare before the school buses came, maybe 10 minutes. So you can't control traffic, so there could be a time where the bus doesn't quite make it back in time, then you've got half to seven thirty without their school transportation. So it's out of our control. And the second trip was the day trip to Riverbend Nature Center in Fairville. 323 students participated in this portion. They had quality environmental science instruction combined with activities that were led by the middle school staff, so part of it was the Riverbend staff, and part of it was the middle school staff. And speaking with the director and their new outdoor education specialist, Riverbend is willing to customize additional program, including adventure or team-building activities. So they have a goal to actually not only instruct archery and slackline and things like that, but also put in kind of ropes courses, like that, that's their plan for the future. And they talked about customizing a day for us to include more than the environmental education. The cost for that portion of the trip was neutral as well, which is our guideline or our goal on a field trip. That student is not eating anything from the pond, which is showing, getting down and close and a little bit dirty. The first day when they went to Riverbend, which is also the day that I attended Riverbend, it was mostly rainy, and there were downpours at times, which I guess is part of nature. And no matter how many times the teachers reminded the students to bring rain gear, just like they go to school in the middle of winter with foot flops and no jacket, many of them appeared without it. Fortunately, it was, the weather was fairly warm. A cold rain would have sent some kids shivering, because they did get wet, there's no doubt about it. The second day, of course, was nice, and kids didn't need anything. The first day, right before I got there, there was actually some lightning flashes in the area, and so I had directed the staff that to not get off the bus if there was lightning in the area, or to go into a building and work with the staff. They seemed a little bit dismayed that they brought the kids into the building, and so I had to talk with the director, and I said, "That's what I directed them to do." And the lightning went away before I even got there, so it was just rain that they dealt with. But that was a communication thing that would have to get worked out with them. They did also plan, typically, they worked with Carlton Upper Arb on this invasive species and the Buckthorn project that they do as part of their life science class. Rather than run a very complicated trip that they normally do, they saw this as an opportunity to run the trip on the same day. It didn't work the first day, because it was all mud at Carlton, it rained very heavy the night before, and it just, it isn't a good idea to have them out there on the hillsides at Carlton. They did go the second day. In the long run, Ms. Meehan and Ms. Allen are actually telling us that the overall project at Carlton is winding down this phase, and they really won't have the opportunity to work with them in the near future anyway, so that something could be picked up again. But right now, they would not recommend planning that as a part of moving in the future. And the middle school staff did plan a significant portion of the activities. They had some activities back at school, and they also had the activities that they led at Riverbend. So we have some general observations, and this is about the day trips. Erin, come back up, we can talk about the Eagle Bluff portion of it. But we wanted to just give you a sense of what we learned, and that was, you know, the primary reasons were, we had too many students to really pull off an Eagle Bluff trip, and we had never done the day trips in this format, so we wanted to find out how it would work. So our main goals were to make sure that all students received environmental education and team-building activities. That happened. Despite the persistent communication efforts, 30 students did not bring in permission slips and therefore could not attend either day trip, so they received alternate instruction. So unlike Eagle Bluff trips where there really wasn't, what I would say, significant instruction taking place when they're left behind on these same goals, this was designed to, if they did not bring in a permission slip, which we cannot bring them if they don't, they received basically the same learning objectives, just on our own campus. And there's some insight that we learned from that as well. So this is down from a third, or in this case, would have been maybe 120, 125 students, if we had our historical average playing out of kids who would not participate. So we were down to only 30 kids that did not participate this time. And some of the reasons were the same, though. Families not willing to ask for a scholarship, and therefore not bringing in the $30 and not asking for a scholarship, so they weren't signing the permission form. And there were some families that I know from personal contact with, they just don't want their students leaving the campus and going off somewhere, and there's a lot of personal family reasons why, and we just have to honor and respect those. They'll never be 100%. I think those days are long gone, where you just load up on the bus and tell them they're going. So maybe they'll come back someday, but I don't see that in the near future. And there was a lot of effort went into preparing this on the middle school staff. They did a wonderful job, and there were definitely some leaders, but everybody contributed to that. All students, including all seventh-grade staff, participated in the day trips or the alternate activities, and all the St. Dominic students were able to participate. And being they're halftime with us in seventh grade, and they have science with us, it was great that they could all participate as well, which did not happen in Eagle Bluff. In the past, about half of our seventh-grade staff had any involvement in the Eagle Bluff trip, and this year it was 100%. We talked about the Carlton project, I mean, with Buckthorn and invasive species, probably would not be a part of a future project. For those day trips, and of course, the two day trips were a total of $30, would be the full price, and then scholarships were available. In fact, of the 323 participants, 44 students accessed partial scholarship, and five students accessed full scholarships. And those, just like Eagle Bluff scholarships, were provided by, from the generous support of the Myrtle Use in Environmental Education Trust Fund, which is set up for exactly this purpose. The consensus among our participating staff members was that Base Camp day trip should be reserved immediately for next year. We just could hardly find anything negative about it whatsoever. And the trip to Riverbend, the general feedback was, that's a nice, close location, and they do an excellent job there, and many things could be explored with them. But they also thought that they could actually replicate the Eagle Bluff experience, being the responsible for teaching half of it anyway, in this model. They could do it right on our Northfield Public Schools campus. So whether it's the Carson Nature Center... So whether it's the Carson Nature Center, or the observation areas that the seventh grade teachers have set up, the wetland areas, and things like that, they feel that they could do it right there, and then you'd have a hundred percent participation, and you'd cut the cost in half. Our coordinators, which was a new position, we created a stipend out of our site budget to support Amy Allen and Lisa Hovden doing the extra work that they would need to beyond their regular day jobs to line up this trip. They did a great job, and they're very willing to continue on in that capacity next year. And if we look ahead, the current sixth grade class, when I left them today, was two hundred ninety-six students. If we apply the historical trends of St. Dominic students and general growth from nearby communities and move-ins, that would project out to three hundred twenty students for next year. So it's still a larger group than we're used to, about three hundred per grade. So size is still an issue moving in like one more year. So, the purpose of today was, we spent a lot of time last year looking at a very complicated issue, means a lot to people in this community, and we felt that after all that work and after completing these trips, that it was only fair that we brought back some results to share with you, and will certainly entertain questions about either part of it. That's where we're at. Oh, hang on, we got, we got the last part here, we'll see if it works. So, this is, this is outside the Wicklow Building, right next to the outdoor ropes course and everything like this. And, yeah, thank you. It's a nice picture, but there, actually. And the purpose of that, other than just a nice closing, is to show you that, you know, you see pictures of kids digging in the swamp and climbing walls and things like that, and you can see the outdoor, part of the outdoor climbing area behind there. But a big part of what Eagle Bluff does is these team building activities. Each kid gets to experience leadership roles and cooperative thinking and problem solving and things like that. We can't underplay how important that is and why the kids like that so much. And that's another thing that base camp did an excellent job at. Literally half the day was those type of activities, and they can be as simple as, you know, devices like that, but it, it never gets boring watching the kids do that, and to see a different side of their personalities is really neat. So I wanted to make sure that we gave some, some equal time to the team building activities as well. Now we're on to questions.
Board members' questions?
Julie?
Well, I want to thank you for this presentation, because as, as a board member, it was a difficult decision for me last year in determining what, how best to move forward, and it is really, really fun to see the results. And to see that number of three hundred and twenty-three kids is so amazing, because we know typically a hundred kids were sitting back in the building. So I, I just think it's thrilling. And my daughter was on the trip and absolutely loved both of them. And the team building she talked about for several days, that was one of the highlights for her. So I don't think enough credit can be given to Amy and Lisa and the staff for planning this, because this was, this came on fairly late in the season for them to have to turn around and figure out what to do in September, and to be able to pull that off with the numbers that they had to deal with. They really need to be congratulated, as well as all the staff who supported their efforts, too. I think it looks like it was a huge win.
And part of doing this presentation is information for you, but it's also a kind of a symbolic way to acknowledge and everybody thanked them for the work that they did, because some people were a hundred percent favorites, some were skeptical, but now they've all seen what can be, as we reflect back onto reflecting on actual experience rather than just fear of the unknown and things like that, which was a part of why it was such a challenging decision to make.
Thank you. Other questions? Rob?
The week before all this happened, I was walking through the arb, and I saw Katrina there talking to Nancy Braker, and she was talking about how difficult the logistics were because you were, at that point before they knew it was going to be, or I guess they knew at that point it was going to be really rainy, but they were talking about three different sites, with different groups and different places at different times, and it was just very logistically challenging to arrange this whole thing. So I am really grateful that they, you know, are so dedicated that they took the time to do that, and that you support them in doing that. And I'm just wondering about the lessons you learned about the logistics, so that it'll be easier next year to plan out all of these complicated pieces.
Well, it probably wouldn't surprise you to hear that some of the people involved in the planning are what you might call perfectionists, just like maybe some of the people we saw from Sidley before. And so that, that, I think that was a little stressful for them trying to, you know, come up with this whole giant thing. It's like, wow, we can, we can fold in our Carlton trip, we can do this, we can make great use of all this time. And the thing that they learned in the end is it doesn't have to be that complicated. That the Carlton trip that they did every year anyway was a logistical nightmare to begin with. I mean, they literally had each class going out and coming back. It was worthwhile, but it was, that was complicated, too. And so what they're really, I did not even expect this or see it coming, when we had staff reflect back, we had a reflection meeting about it, they came up and said, really, we think we could even do the exact same goals with one actual field trip and one on-campus trip, and that would make everybody's life easier when it comes to details like that. We didn't see that coming, but it makes perfect sense, and it gives a lot of support to why we keep a big, you know, sixty-acre campus with all these little areas that say, our, our staff, especially the, the science people, teach off that campus on a regular basis. They know how to you, how to put that campus to use for their instruction, and they'd love nothing more than a whole day to put it to work, so.
Great, thanks.
Rob, or Noel?
Yeah. Nice job, it's really an upbeat presentation, thank you so much.
All right. Well, thank you. Yeah, it was really nice to have that closure and have it be such a positive closure. So I appreciate all your leadership, Jeff, and, and what you did with this, and that your great team, Amy and Katrina and Lisa Hovden and Erin, so, thank you.
For taking on the...
Yeah, for taking on the Eagle Bluff, absolutely.
Summer, summer program, making it work. I think the key piece with this is, I think we had, you know, really good efforts on the part of, of both community services and the middle school staff to really make this happen. But I think it also got at, everything that you told us needed to happen. We gave the opportunity for those students and parents who wanted to see their child be involved in a overnight activity, get a chance to do that. And almost every, well, every child that signed up in the normal timeframe was able to go. The only students that weren't able to go were students that had already signed up late. And again, my belief is that as we go forward into the next year, word of mouth of what was it like will help to make the next year go even smoother there. And I really believe that as we think about what we want the day trip piece to look like, the concept again of having one hundred percent of the teaching staff involved, and making sure that we come as close to a hundred percent of the student population involved, gets us much, much farther down the road in terms of providing those team building pieces and the environmental pieces that we'd like to do with our one-day trips. And again, I think the, the work of all of the staff at the middle school in terms of making it happen demonstrates that, you know, they understood what the concerns were, they understood why we needed to look at doing something differently, and they handled it, I think, very well in terms of grabbing not only what we need to do for summer, but also what we need to do for this fall semester to get this off the ground. I think we're off to a really good, and off to a great start, and in a really good place to go forward. I wanted then to give Jeff an opportunity to shift gears a little bit. He was wondering if I was going to get his entree in for the next piece, but as you remember during the announcements, we talked a little bit about the concept of all of the middle school staff being involved in the National Middle School Level Conference, which is being held in Minneapolis next week. And what I've asked Jeff to do is just to give you a little bit of information about what that's going to look like, and the, I think the powerful nature of being able to have an entire staff of, of a school be involved in this activity, and to do something that is kind of a once-in-a-lifetime, in that I, I don't think there's ever been a middle school conference held in Minneapolis ever before, has there, once? So the, the chances are that we're going to have a lot of people, this will be the only middle school conference that they will ever attend. So why don't you talk to them a little bit about that, Jeff?
Okay, well, I'm here to share something that's very exciting, and also very rare, so you might get questions, especially when it becomes a reality, when people start planning for, oh, we seriously don't send our middle school students to school this day, this is very unusual. So we want to give you kind of a quick elevator speech so that you're prepared for that, and if there are things that have caught you off guard, or you just have questions about, I'd be happy to answer those for you. But we have the National Amli Conference taking place November sixth through November ninth, and Amli is the new name for the National Middle School Association, it's Association for Middle Level Education. It's actually an international conference, there'll be people from international schools, Canada, even schools that aren't international schools that are around the world that participate in this, not only as presenters, but also as participants at the conference. Our staff has the opportunity to participate in events from Wednesday through Saturday, but obviously, when we're talking about having a day off from school, we needed to compact that down to one day that our staff will, will go. This is a, really a once-in-a-career opportunity. I've been able to go to five national conferences in my career. I don't believe we have another person on our entire staff that's ever been to a national conference. In fact, I'm only aware of two people that have ever gone to the state middle level conference. So this is truly rare, and it's one of those things where you, you might ask, why? And the answer is, I don't know why, it just, that's just how things fell into place, and it's probably time to really get Northfield out there, exposed to some of these concepts in middle level education as a part of our development as a middle school. And we're going to be doing some neat things to actually promote Northfield, which we'll talk about in just a moment. The cost of sending, what we have lined up right now as of this afternoon was ninety-nine staff members. This includes all of our teachers, our educational assistants, Promise Fellows, and some of the office support staff. They have a special where if we were to send the entire faculty, the, the cost of the conference, at that point, we've hit the maximum for a organization, so everybody else is basically coming along for free. So it makes sense to bring all these other people, especially if there's no school that day. So this is truly, for educational assistants and office staff, this is definitely a once-in-a-career opportunity, and most likely for our staff, it is a once, once-in-a-career opportunity. The national conference has been held in Minneapolis once before, and who knows if it will come back again. The cost of sending, I, I figured that, based on going to some national conferences at places around the country in the past, I know how much that costs, and for the, for the cost of sending eight or ten staff members to Las Vegas or New Orleans or wherever a national conference might be, we're bringing ninety-nine people for that same equivalent. The registration fee and the transportation is paid a hundred percent by our site staff development budget, so you know, there's a requirement to set aside money for staff development. We've actually planned ahead and squirreled away money for two years to, to pay for this out of our own site budget. We're riding orange school buses and taking the staff up there so that they have transportation to and from. Obviously, this is seen as not only an educational and a professional development experience, but also as a, a team building opportunity. So people trying to walk on long planks there, well, it's not often that we can get ninety-nine middle school staff members together to do something like this. In fact, we have special shirts that our site improvement team has purchased with our trash-for-cash dollars, they have our new slogan on the back of them, and we figure that people are going to notice that Northfield's there. They're going to be thinking, wow, these people are really, really into the middle school, and they'll be asking, I think it's going to be a conversation started, because some of our, our staff is going to be a little tepid about coming in and like, oh, what do I do and where do I go? And I think people start talking to them, and they'll come away with all kinds of great connections that they don't make by just staying here at, at Northfield. And just for comparison's sake, I've been talking for over a year with Chris Busman, who is a middle school principal in Farmington, and also lives in, in Northfield, his kids go to school here. Farmington is also sending their entire middle school faculty in a very similar way, so we will not be the only ones doing something like that. And before I take questions, I want to make sure that I thank you for the support, because although we're paying for the, for this conference fees, we are paying the staff salaries for everybody, and we are sending the students elsewhere for that day. And that is a phenomenal commitment on your part, and we thank you from the bottom of our heart for that, because we need that step to make this happen. We will be promoting it not only by having this large staff there that way, but we'll have our honors choir performing for, at the conference as a, as a showpiece. On Thursday, the opening day, I'll be presenting on, on Thursday, and I'll be back again on Saturday, and all our staff is also able, at their own transportation, to go back on Saturday as well. I'll be working the whole day facilitating conferences for the association. So that is Amli in a nutshell. We do have a Skylert message going out tomorrow, reminding parents not only that November fourth is a professional day and a grading day, so that their kids will not be going to school, but also right away on November eighth, middle level only, so we're trying to really emphasize that. So hopefully that's not going to cause confusion or create phone calls for our youth, because it's, it's where, I think, in the time I've been here, maybe the high school one time had hosted a music festival or something like that, went out of school. So there is a precedent, but it's very rare, so.
Ian?
I have a request.
Would you like to come with? We have room on the bus.
Yeah, and it's free, you know, because you've already hit our sixty-five.
I could register you tomorrow if you'd like to go.
I might think about that.
And you'd get a T-shirt.
Take, take pictures. I, you know, get an ABC with her camera and...
We'll get some pictures, yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Put them in the scrapbook.
Other questions?
Julie?
What will the day be like? Is it large group presentations, or is there a number of workshops that they get to choose from, or what will that look like?
Well, it's a little complicated in, in the fact that the conference begins with the keynote speaker at seven-thirty in the morning, and the concurrent sessions go till five o'clock, and then there are always evening activities each of the nights. So some of our staff just cannot be there that long, whether they're taking care of their own children, or they have to coach, or whatever the case may be. So we're running an early bus at six-fifteen and one again at seven-forty-five, and a bus comes back at three, and another one comes back at five-fifteen. So those that want to catch the entire thing can, they'll see the keynote speakers, they'll be able to go to concurrent sessions. I was looking at this the other day, there's approximately fifty, sixty sessions going on in every time slot. So staff can pick by subject area, by presenter name, I mean, they can go through this whole thing and pick cafeteria style, what they want to see for these concurrent sessions. And then something that you don't normally think about unless you're a regular conference goer is, the vendors are actually very informative, especially when we're talking about moving forward with transformative, transformative technology that's still new to us, and to go in and find out, for example, what apps are available that, that work for the subject area that you teach and things like that. So there's this new added value to hanging around the vendor area, which is, is giant. And then, of course, there's the networking that goes on, and there's performances and things like that that are going on. So if you're a choir teacher and you want to see some of the other choirs or orchestras or whatever, this is a great opportunity to see students from around the world performing there. And we're very happy, I do have to commend Kathy Penning for taking on the challenge of preparing for this, because there is no extra stipend, there is no extra, anything other than a pat on the back, and she's put in a ton of work getting these kids ready, but I believe it's, it's why they do honors choir, so that they can find an audience to, to, to sit and see how talented they are and listen to how talented they are. So, so that's kind of what the day will be like, you know, we are one day, it'd be great if we could participate in it more than that, but I, I don't think that we could pull that off. So this is, this is accelerating quite a bit from the past of nobody ever going to a conference to ninety-nine people going together, so.
Thank you. Other questions? Thank you, Jeff.
Thanks, Jeff.
All right, we are ready to move on. We have no items for individual action, so we're ready to move on to the consent grouping. Is there anything anyone wishes to pull from the consent grouping? I asked for a motion to approve the consent grouping.
So moved.
Moved by John, seconded by Noel. All those in favor of approving the consent grouping, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. And as I asked at the beginning that we add an item for information that was not on the original agenda, Dr. Richardson's going to say a few words about... was not on the original agenda, Dr. Richardson's going to say a few words about a work session to discuss district's future facility needs.
You bet. But as you know, we are facing in the fall of 2014, 15, the need to have all-day, everyday kindergarten options for every child in our district. And I would imagine that except for a few folks who may say, no, I only want my child to go half-day and I'll have him come home at noon, the vast majority of students are going to want to be in an all-day environment. In fact, we're actually seeing and believe that across the state, there's actually some red-shirting going on, where parents are holding their kids back for a year so that they can come in and have an all-day program to start with at no cost. So, as we've begun to look at what is that going to look like, because as you know, our buildings were not built for all-day K, they were built for half-day programs, and the fortunate thing is we've had a chance with several of our tuition programs to try out all-day K in terms of at least a couple of sections in each building. But what we know is that as we move forward, we're going to see at least two of our buildings at capacity right away, and maybe beyond capacity if the red-shirting piece actually comes to pass, and we actually begin to see more kids coming in than we have currently had in going forward. So, as we have tried to look at this and think about how is this all going to play out, we've also begun to think about, well, there are ways we can address this on the short term. There are some things that we can do to try to make sure that we have classroom spaces in each building to provide kindergarten for each building and have enough sections. But what we're also seeing is that there are some real long-term issues about how should this look going forward, because as we potentially see growth in the future of our district, and as we think about what really makes the most sense across the buildings, there may be a real need to take a longer view. And so, what we'd really like to do is have an opportunity through a board work session to talk to you about what we see as the issue as we move forward, to give you some background, to give you some data about what we're currently seeing in terms of numbers, what's happening in terms of the impact of open enrollment, both into the district and out of the district, the impact of intra-district transfer of students within the district moving from area to area, and also the impact of non-resident agreements as we go forward, as well as the impact that we've seen over the last decade of the growth of our charter school programs in terms of the numbers of students involved in the charter school, and the ongoing operation of St. Dominique's. And looking at it not only from a purely numbers standpoint, but also from a standpoint of how is the balance of students in terms of diversity playing out across the system? And do we need to think about pieces along the line of trying to do a better job of balancing not only the numbers of students within buildings, but also the diversity? And when you get to that level, now instead of just impacting elementary buildings, it actually has impacted the middle school and impacted the high school. So, what we'd like to do is have a chance to kind of talk about these pieces with you, to talk about what we think are some potential initial needs that would help us to gather additional data that we think we're going to need to have to be able to help you make good decisions, and then actually to lay out a series of potential, short-term and long-term options for your consideration. And with the idea that these will be very much at the 30,000-foot level, with some pros and cons, but will help you to see the complexity of the problem that we're dealing with. And so, trying, I think, as a cabinet to the board to be able to say, yes, we can do some short-term fixes to get things to work for the next year or so, but the reality is if we really want to make sure that we're positioned going forward, we need to also think long-term. I think we've talked over the years about the idea that we have always wanted to position ourselves so that we can be good stewards of the district's facilities, and good stewards of our program. We're in a position right now financially where we can afford to do some things to help us take a look into the future in terms of what the enrollments are going to look like, and what the diversity is across the system. And we can, I think, afford to take a look at doing a more district-wide look at our facilities, given the fact that we have some buildings that are very new, like the middle school, fairly new like Bridgewater, older but with a new addition like Sibley, older without a new addition like Greenville Park, and much older like Longfellow, but still a very functional building, and thinking about how all those buildings are going to come together. So, what we'd like to propose would be the idea of having a work session, and trying to do this in November. We've got about three, we have three days that we think might be workable days for possible work sessions. One would be the 14th of November, which would be a Thursday, the next would be November 19th, which would be a Tuesday, the next would be November 21st, that would be a Thursday. And so, what I guess I'm looking for at this point is to have you do some calendar checking. I know that Ellen has said that she'll work with Anita to put together doodle pool, so we can get information out and have each of you get back to us as part of the possibilities. In the meantime, what we're going to be doing as a cabinet, I would share with you right now, we're on draft seven. I have draft six here, but we actually modified it again tonight. So, we have done quite a bit of brainstorming, we have 11 very thick word-pack pages of just our thoughts about the different pieces. Potentially, we're going to take a look at some of these options over the next week or so and say, I don't think this one is worth taking any further forward. But what we want to be able to do is to come with you to say, here are the options, and before we can really get to those options, we need some other pieces, and to get your permission to take a look at those, and also your insight and feedback as to where do we need to go forward in terms of tracking, knowing that before we get too much farther into this, once we get the board's understanding and sense, we'll also need, as we begin to get the data back from the demographic study and from the facility study, that we're going to have to take this out into the community and share this information with people so that they can see exactly what the possibilities are. I guess I would very much hope that what we can do for you over the course of this year is to set our sights and set our direction for the next decade or two in terms of thinking about where we need to go with facilities. And, you know, I think we've done a very good job of addressing the short-term pieces, we've done a very good job of addressing the special education needs that we have in our system, and I think we've done a good job of trying to keep ahead, but I think we're at a point now where a single fix into one building may deal with the short-term issues, but may not deal well with the long-term pieces. So, that's what I guess I'm asking you to consider, is the possibility of having a work session would give us as a cabinet then an opportunity to talk with you about what we're seeing and what the issues are, and then to get your feedback and your direction as to how you'd like us to proceed going forward. And again, with an understanding that there are going to need to be some decisions made early this spring or late this winter in terms of specifically what we're going to do for next fall, to make sure that we have an adequate number of all-day, everyday kindergarten spaces in each building. Beyond that, though, we're going to really need to take a hard look at some of the other pieces going forward to think about what makes the most sense, not only to address simply the facility side of saying, I have enough space in each building to fit all the kids that we have, but also thinking about the fact that there's a fairly significant imbalance in the diversity in our buildings, especially at the, obviously, especially at the elementary level. And because there's diversity imbalance there in terms of the number of students in each building, and the diversity in terms of free and reduced-price lunch, and in terms of population of students of color, we need to be thinking about how do we want to play that going forward so that we really meet the needs of our kids in the best way. So, that's really what I'm asking for consideration on, and hoping that you'd be willing to take a look at a work session and try to address that.
And so, the reason for looking at November is not to rush anything, but actually to be able to take the time to, Dr. Richardson in the cabinet has been working so closely on is if we're going to need to do, if there's more data that's going to be needed by the board, it's more to get us on the same page, and to have that time to be able to seek the additional data so that we can really make some good decisions for the long term over a longer period of time. So, I just wanted to make sure you knew we weren't trying to rush anything, but instead try to actually be able to pull data together in a reasonable way.
Because there's definitely some pieces we don't have. We don't have an up-to-date demographic study. The last one, I think, was done by Hazel Reinhardt, when, Anita, before I came here. So-
Prior to building middle school.
Prior to building middle school, probably back around 2000, 2001, I'm guessing. So, that's been the last demographic study that's been done here. And then, in terms of really looking at the facilities piece, again, while I think the focus was on specific facilities' needs, the idea of really taking a look at all of the buildings and seeing how they all fit together and how they work, I'm not sure when that has been done before. And so, while I think there was lots of work that went into thinking about the middle school implementation, and what the middle school needed to do, and how it needed to look, really thinking about how does that fit together with what the needs are at the high school, what are the needs in each of the three elementary buildings, and some things that have really changed, like, you know, we're seeing much more of an interest now in moving to an early childhood center strategy, where you really bring all of the early childhood programming, including kindergarten, together, and how does that look, and is that something that we should be considering? Thinking about what are the right grade levels for elementary. Middle schools, lots of middle schools operate in 5-8 mode. We're seeing actually a lot of schools now going to K-8, which is an interesting piece. They're really moving it back to what I remember, you know, before I started school, which was grammar school, where you went to grammar school until you finished eighth grade. So, you know, there are lots of different ways to kind of think about that process. And then, also thinking about the fact that while we've addressed a significant amount of our special ed needs, that's continuing to be an issue. This building especially has some major issues in terms of having enough space to really address the special education needs that we have for kids. And we have some real transportation and other kinds of issues when we have to put kids on the bus to bus them to the Rock House, so that they can do something in the Rock House. And so, you burn 20 minutes getting them onto the bus and loaded and whatever, 20 minutes getting them off, so that they can have an activity at the Rock House, because that's the only place that really has a setup to give them an apartment experience in terms of life skills. So, I really would like us to take a hard look across the board, but that's another part of, I think, what we want to discuss, so.
So, really what you need from board members is to, when you get home, start looking at your calendar, and Anita and I will get a doodle poll out with these dates and see if it's possible to try to get us together in November. I know it's a busy time, and we're trying to catch you before it gets busier.
Okay.
Sorry?
What was the date?
The 14th of November, which would be a Thursday, the 19th of November, which is a Tuesday, and the 21st, which is a Thursday. And again, that first week, the 12th, remember, is the school board meeting, which is a Tuesday night, because Veterans Day is on Monday, and the other two are the 19th and the 21st that are Tuesday, Thursday.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
So, with that, I would have you look at future meetings, and I just wanted to remind you that the next board meeting is a Tuesday, and we have the 6:30 reception for committed scholars. And I just wanted to check with you, Anita, on our minutes from the last time, we had a 7:30 board start, and on our agenda here, we have a 7 o'clock.
Your agenda is correct, where it says 7:30, the memorandum was-
Memorandum is the one that's, okay.
It says 7:30, but it's 7:30 typically that.
7:30, right. I was thinking it was going to be, it's a, right, it's a smaller group, but I don't know if we can quite have a reception in our chairs by 7, but-
Very careful.
Yeah, so, anyway, there's your reminder for the next board meeting, and then the following one will be Monday, November 25th. All right, with that, I would ask for a motion for adjournment. Moved by Noel, seconded by Ann. All those in favor of adjourning the meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Meeting is adjourned.